I know that Todd made a comment that, you know, we need to worry about the budget now. Now, I mean, we're talking about maybe doing some transition with some lit. That is going to take time to get through the different boards and it's not going to be passed before we have to pass a budget. So it might be something to give us relief next year, but it's not a guarantee. And it's not something that we can bank on for this budget for next year. We need to anticipate that we aren't going to get it. It's not going to happen. And at the end of the day, we have to fund what we have. And yes, I do think that this council needs to look at doing a higher increase going forward for the next couple of years.
Agreed.
Because we don't know what we're going to be, what's going to happen. And it's going to need to be looked at by case by case. You know, I understand some departments might have one or two people working in them. So obviously you can't say, well, you can't build that position. But some of our larger departments are going to have to look at cutting back. I prefer to say that it'd be great if the department heads looked at their workforce and determined themselves, because they know their budgets, they know their people, they know what needs to be done in those departments, on where they can consolidate workforce and where they can cut back costs of employees. Because at the end of the day, the majority of our budget is employees. It's benefits, it's salaries. And unless we cut those, and I don't think you want the council to make the determination of who's going to lose employees, it'd be best for the departments to do that for themselves going forward for the next few years. I ran some figures. I just want to get my stuff in order here because I've got quite a base. So I know it was said that, you know, we don't need to hire that company. And I'm fine with not hiring the company. I do think it would be very beneficial to us. But I did run some numbers and as I said, I am not an accountant. But basically what I did look at is, oh, I haven't looked at the right place here. I haven't looked at this in a week because I was on vacation, so. So right now, our current revenue, including property tax and lit shares is, and this is the number that Todd gave us, was forty-four million, four hundred fifty-eight thousand, one hundred ninety-six dollars and eighty cents to be exact. Our public safety generates six million, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, fifty-two dollars. And our jail lit currently is seven million, two hundred fifty-six, four thirty-six. A total of fifty-eight million, six hundred and seventy-two dollars and six, sorry, that is the wrong, fifty-eight million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred eighty-four point eight in revenue. Now, the estimated lit for twenty-eight, the maximum that we can do is 1.2%. And our lit correction is from, you look at the numbers from our lit correction, this is money that's brought in from the entire county. It goes directly just to the county council or to the county, not to any of the other municipalities. Currently set at point two. If you take that amount, which currently this year is going to generate seven million, two hundred fifty-six thousand, four hundred thirty-six dollars, you multiply it by six, six because point two goes into 1.26 times. This will give us an estimate at today's picture of the revenue. So with that being said, that would give us forty-three million, five hundred thirty-eight thousand, five hundred thirty-eight thousand, six hundred sixteen dollars in lit revenue. On top of that, we have some miscellaneous revenues. I had to take out, I took out property tax completely and I took out the current lit that's in our estimation. And that gave us an additional eight million, seventy-six thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars, which gives us a grand total of fifty-one million, six hundred fifteen, six hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. Mind you, I said that our spending right now is at fifty-eight plus million. That's going to generate fifty-one point six. I had that short. And I estimated if maybe we got half the property taxes, because we don't know. I don't know what's going to happen with property taxes. So I take that fifty-one million that I just told you and I estimate at half of our property taxes from what Todd's given us, our totals today. That's an additional eleven, I'm going to just round, I'm not going to give you the numbers. Eleven point five million dollars additional, which puts us at just a little over sixty-three million, which is much better because we needed fifty-eight point six. Now we got sixty-three point one. So no property tax, we're going to be short over almost seven million dollars. If we get property taxes, we're going to be over approximately four million dollars additional revenue, four point four. These are unknowns. I don't know them. These are just by estimations. And like I said, I'm going to tell you again, I'm not an accountant. But these are things that we have to consider going forward because we cannot get this council to a position where we have a budget that we can't fund. At the end of the day, and people want to say, you got this great big rainy day fund. You can't use rainy day to pay salaries. I can do a one-time payment out of the rainy day for salaries because it's a one-time payment, but I cannot put it in my general fund, increase my general fund and be required to have to make that the next year and the next year and the next year. It doesn't work, people. It just doesn't work. I don't like it. I wish it was different, but that's just the reality of what's set before us. And yeah, I didn't make the decisions at the state. The state made those decisions for us. And all the prop, and we have a jail that we have to fund. And if people might disagree that we maybe don't need the jail or we do need the jail, it's not really, at the end of the day, we got to have a jail and the jail we got right now. And if you haven't visited it, I encourage you to go visit it because I have been through the jail. And it is sad, people. It is sad. Not only that, but we're housing people out of county, which is costing us county money. We're housing people from DOC, which they're not paying, which had they take, if they would have just at least taken the people that are supposed to be in DOC, we probably wouldn't have to have the out-of-housing cost that we're also being incurred. So the county or the state is costing us money at the end of the day. I can't control the state. I can only control what's in front of me. So when we left off at our budget last month, I think it was, we were approximately four million dollars over budget. And that was with absolutely no raises. The only thing that it did put in there is the, huh? What did I say? Sorry, two.
Just multiply it really, that's okay.
Yes, we're approximately, we're approximately two million dollars over budget. So what my thought was, going forward, was this. We currently have a reserve insurance fund. There's not a lot in there, but we've got almost three million dollars in there. My initial thought was let's take a million dollars from the commissioner's budget for the insurance and reduce it by a million.
That is going from five point three to four.
Yeah, yes. And then, we currently have in the rainy day fund, we've got a requested budget of two point five million dollars. That's covering the capital case, that's covering our twenty, what is it, our twenty-sixth pay, twenty-seventh pay. I believe that's all that's budgeted in there right now. My request is, I went through the current budget that we did. I left, for the merit contract, I left the benefits in there.
Oh, that was nice.
I took the pay lines back down to the increase with their longevity. Tim had graciously given those, that number to us. That was allowed us to be able to reduce the budget. I'm currently, I believe that is the only changes I made. So, well, the only other one I did is I did have a postage in the treasurer's office. That was mine. We are still approximately just under five hundred thousand dollars over budget. Before I address that particular aspect of it, what I want to do is for the merit officers is a one-time payout at 11% out of the rainy day fund, approximately a hundred eighty thousand, just a little over a hundred eighty thousand dollars. I also want to give the regular employees a one-time 3% out of there, which is another six hundred and twenty thousand. That would bring our rainy day fund up to an appropriate amount of 3.3 million, a little bit over that. It doesn't commit us to anything in the future except for the benefit package for the merits. And hopefully going forward, we'll see what next year brings when it comes to the next budget. There's some things that are coming down the pipeline I can't control. Mandatory raises that I have to give based upon what the state throws at us. Those are things that we aren't going to have to consider. So now back to the 4.5 million dollars that were over budget. And I know Todd's not going to like what I'm going to say, but I say that we go from 80% to 82%. That'll cover the difference of that.
Of the 460,000.
Yes. That will cover the difference of that 460,000 giving us a balanced budget. Those are my thoughts.
You guys had a chance to hear what Councilor Norwood said, thoughts about that?
Well, and I should say that the million dollars I'm reducing from the commissioner's budget, they will be able to cross on that insurance reserve fund. It's not going to be something that I'm going to have any appropriate money for next year to be able to cover it.
I'll go get it back. Moving back.
Kulp, you see, are there any issues with that?
You just want to keep in mind, this is very plausible to do, but you do want to keep in mind that as the insurance reserve fund goes down, it could make premiums for employees go up. The insurance reserve fund is, they look at it as how much reserves the county has when they're determining rates for the employees. So you may, I don't want you to do it and not anticipate that there may be an increase in health insurance rates to the employees by reducing them.
Do you know if there's a threshold there? Are you aware of it?
I know the threshold. I don't think any of our commissioners are, but they would have a better threshold.
Something worth checking into, to see if it's a one and a half million or two million or whatever that threshold number is.
The purpose of giving an increase and then raising the premium four percent.
Well, and there's no guarantee of how much they're going to have to pull from that revenue either.
With the proposed change in taxing structure, that still has to go through all the tax councils, that was called?
Yes, the tax council.
How soon would we find out? Like how?
Sure. You would want.
I'd like to, I'd like to just introduce that to the public here. So that, like this, this is a little complicated. You feel kind of, hang with it. I think it will set at least a foundation for a discussion about the lit. And I'm just going to read this because I think it makes maybe more sense. So one option is to take a local income tax. In Madison County, it's 2.25%. One percent of that 2.25 goes into the general fund. Point five-five is dedicated to the public safety fund. Point two is dedicated to the correction lit for the county. And point five is dedicated to property tax relief. And the sum of the general fund, public safety fund, correction lit and property tax relief is that 2.25. So the local income tax is 2.25%, that's what, that's the total money that comes in. Some years ago, my understanding is that.
How much is in every area?
That, that, those proportions are just set. And they, once they're set, they stay in place until something changes. And there are thresholds to change them. If you change them by November first or October 31st, you, they then take effect in January of that following year. In the state of Indiana, there are, there are ninety-two counties. Well, I'm just going to finish through this. The property tax relief will be eliminated on a county level by the SCA one, the new law, effective December 31st, 2027. So for the next two years, this property tax relief piece will be in place. And starting in 2028, it will be gone. So it's a two-year thing. There will be a different property tax relief element that counties can adopt. Now, the most it could be would be point three percent, which is point two percent lower than our current rate. You remember that, that property tax relief is point five percent of that 2.25. Thirty-four counties don't have any property tax relief. Thirty-four of the ninety-two counties don't have any that are offered for tax relief. And of the, of the others that do, which would be fifty-some, Madison County, only five counties have a higher property tax relief in Madison County. So, so the council and the tax council for the whole, for the whole county, which are groups of cities and towns and municipalities, all set that way because they believe the property tax relief would be important. Well, the state took a little while to catch up, but they just decided this year, property tax relief is important. And so that, that's the situation. If we take the point five percent and we cut that in half, so instead of point five, it went to point two-five. And we took that point two-five and we put it into public safety. That has the potential to provide additional funds in the neighborhood of about three million dollars. That's a very general estimate. And the folks who would benefit from that would be the county and other municipalities. The town of Elwood, town of Pendleton, no, etc.
Excuse me, is that actually three million without the county, like our share?
So the three million is our share. It would be the county's share of that. So it would actually move nine million dollars into the public safety fund collectively, but the county's share would be three million.
Well, and it could go into public safety or it could go.
Or it could go to any other fund.
Go into the certified shares.
Certain things in the general fund, whatever. If, if the property tax relief were eliminated entirely, if we took that point five percent, just put it to zero as thirty-four of the counties. That generates an additional six million dollars in funds for the counties, for the county, for one of the other funds.
For two years.
For two years. This is, this is a two-year deal because in January, January 1st of 2028, there's a different set of rules. So we just have to kind of keep in mind, so what would we require? This, in this setting, the taxes, the local, that doesn't change at all. So the tax, the tax is going up. It's just being redistributed. What we don't know, and I think a natural question would be, well, if property tax relief is given by the state in this new law and property tax relief was given by this lit and some of that is then withdrawn, would people pay more in property tax? Or would there be less relief? When you look at your property tax, if you own a home, there's a certain deduction that comes from that portion, if that makes sense. Those of you who kind of read in your tax, you've seen it. So what this would, I'm throwing on the table the, sort of in addition to what Councilor Norwood suggested, that A, I think this represents a plausible option. The town of Elwood and Pendleton, in processing this, have decided to pay the REEDY group, who we were talking about earlier, who's this financial analyst, five thousand dollars for a very specific assessment of what the implication for property orders would be. It would require us to have a special call meeting to deliberate about this and have a vote. That's not something we could do tonight because it wasn't announced. The soonest we could act on that would be two weeks from this one.
And we're also trying to figure out whether or not with the property tax caps, you can't pay more than 1% of your assessed value on your property. I truly believe that if the property tax credit that we have to the lit, if part of that was to disappear, we're only talking half of it right now. We don't need all of it. We like to take half of it. I believe that the property tax cap will go up on the tax bills, but I don't have that information yet. But I can tell you that on a hundred thousand dollars of income, you're paying approximately five hundred dollars in property taxes. I can tell you that on my tax statement, I don't get five hundred dollars back. I get 275. So I'm paying more in properties, I'm paying more lit on that, that particular item than what I'm receiving in a credit. And so the maximum that I would see a difference is whatever half of 275 is, 135 dollar possible increase in my property taxes. If my property tax cap does not increase, compensate for the difference.
The reality is that we are working to mitigate the impact of the decisions. When I was describing these, this set of circumstances of four million dollars that are, that's drawn for next year relatively speaking, none of that was in our control. I mean, we didn't have anything to do with any of that. So we're trying to, we're trying to figure out ways to manage our expenses and also trying to facilitate revenue. I, what it would require is for us, or at least four of us, to decide, we think that's a good idea. But it would also require the majority of all the other taxing units to make this decision before October 31st. Back to Jody's original point, I, I mean, I believe there's a reasonable possibility that these other units in a majority form will, would be willing to go along with it. But until a vote occurs, we don't know. And I don't think we can, we can know the outcome of that. All we can do is our part, but we can't know the outcome of that before we set this budget. So I believe, I'm speaking in support of Vice President Norwood's proposal. In addition to pursuing this with a meeting in the next couple of weeks, where we have the time, 10-day notice period to address this issue, which has the potential to mitigate the loss and put us in a place where we're paying to the issue of the merit officers, many of whom are still here and bless your hearts for hanging out this long. We kind of processed a couple of different things, but 11% plus all of the benefits for this next year. That's not what they're asking for. They're asking for a three-year guarantee. I don't see how that's easy either. Without just simply paying it out of the rainy day and within a few years it will be gone. And, you know, we don't, we just don't know what the, maybe next year or the next year, there will be a significant move or increase to our, to our, but there's no way we can know that. No one would have anticipated what happened this year. No, no one, literally when the, when the commissioners and the collective bargaining unit were engaging in dialogue, they had no idea we'd be down four million next year. If they had, maybe that would impact the discussion. But this is where we are and the facts have to rule the day. We have to, and we're required, the Department of Local Government Finance, from my understanding, won't allow us to set a budget that doesn't work. Like the state just won't allow it. So we have to present a budget that works.
Who's it have to work for?
I guess what I would like to know is if we are able to get this passed through the tax council, and I don't know, maybe Detective President I can speak on this, but could we, since we know we'll have the funds, if this goes through, we'll have the funds to fund the 21% increase that first year. If we don't have that figured out by the time the budget is put in, is that something we could address later to give the increase? I just feel with Anderson raising their rate so much.
Better do this.
Competitive. And I think doing 21% that first year goes a long way to keeping the officers that, you know, want to keep with the experience that they have. And so we would have the funds to do that if this goes through. So I know we can't write a check based on something that might not go through, but I don't know.
Having the funds to do a one-time payment, because at the end of 27, that money is gone, gone. So that is, I, I don't feel comfortable, I'm sorry, it's not about whether I support anybody at the end of the day.
No, it is.
I want to support everybody. I've got 200-plus employees, including my merit officers, and they didn't get a raise last year at all, nothing. And the merit officers did get a 3% last year underneath their own contract. I do not feel confident in saying, yes, I'm going to sign a contract and I'm going to fund this because then what happens at the end of 27 and I'm doing a 28 budget? Sorry, guys, we have to do a pay cut. I don't want to give you a pay cut. I don't want to have to do that. But I do feel confident and I do feel comfortable saying, I will take some money out of the rainy day fund because I've heard a lot of complaining about our rainy day fund. And yeah, I get it, but I would be willing to say, yes, let's do that increase out of the rainy day fund. The rainy day fund will generate more revenue next year to be able to do, hopefully another 11% payout, a one-time payout to be able to do that. But to say that I'm going to increase your salary by 11%, I can't do that. I personally can't do that because I can't, I can't fund it with the revenues.
Yes, you can.
And the rainy day fund is not a revenue source. It is, it's a savings account. And so to pay one-time things out of it, I'm okay with that. I'm comfortable with that. I'm not okay with funding salaries because at some point in time it's gone.
Sure. We're open to suggestions.
Would you mind?
Yeah, thank you.
I'm going to offer this suggestion without knowing the answer, but I will run it out. So understanding that property tax relief goes away in 2027, the way the organs and resolutions read for lit, if you can transfer that, I believe that point two-five from property tax relief over into certified shares for public safety. And so I think once you've done that in 2027, the only part that would go away is the existing point two-five, I think, which would mean that would stay there past 2027. It would be a permanent part of your lit going forward.
I'd like to know that. The way I understand it, and I, I could very well be wrong, but I understand that come 27, the maximum we can pass for 28 is 1.2% of the lit.
For certified shares.
For certified shares.
Correct.
Because the public safety tax goes away, the jail lit goes away, all that goes away.
No, public safety and jail lit don't go away. Jail lit can't go away because everybody's got bonds that are being.
You don't think that, you don't think, I don't mean go away. I mean that it's incorporated into that 1.2%. Am I incorrect on that?
I don't believe that's the case.
Well, if you can tell me, if you can tell me something different, then that, that forecast is a lot better than what I'm looking.
Yeah. So I've been communicating with your ELGF representative and I haven't asked you that specific question, but I will tomorrow.
So she can look at what we have currently as far as our percentages?
Yes.
If she can say, you'll get to keep this on top of that 1.2%.
Yes.
I would be extremely happy.
Yes. So what do you make of that?
That has huge implications.
It does. And certainly long-term, well past 2027.
Yes. And that's where the REEDY group really, I know some people want to complain about 15,000 I want to take out of the rainy day fund, but you know what? I don't understand it.
Yeah.
And if I read it, it's this thick people, and I am not a lawyer and I'm not an accountant and I don't understand everything, the implications it has for our economy.
I'm just saying, move it to January.
It may give us. Right now, the general fund, certified shares, so I think, I think it would be helpful, actually, if you can check into that.
It will.
I, I think the other dynamic is just looking at, at the potential implications of various percentages. Do we put 2% into that or, you know, into public safety? Or how, how we orchestrate that and the impact.
That's kind of the.
The REEDY group can help us with the impact on property tax relief.
Yes.
Because if that lit remains for the jail, that's $7.2 million that you're telling me is on top of that 1.2, but that is not knowing, that's not how we see it understood either.
Yeah. Do anything to mess up the, the, the.
I can remember the AIC training. I thought somebody asked that, but I can't remember what the answer was.
Let me, let me see what I can find out.
What this shows that is, is give credence to the idea of having a meeting to.
Yes.
Where we have time to do our homework, get our expert opinion and, and come back to this a little bit more knowledgeable. Knowledge. I, I think we still have to reconcile the fact that even if we vote to do that, that doesn't mean it's done because we were dependent on several other entities.
And I'm not, I'm not opposed to revisiting some things after the first of the year if things change.
If, if, right, if we, if we have a, if we have a completely different, if we have three or four million dollars we didn't have, that, that changes the calculations.
And the other thing too, even if you don't be able to get all of the county income tax council to sign off on raising the rate by October 31st. Adopted between October 31st and December 31st, it kicks in August 1st.
It's August 1st.
Yeah, so you.
So it'd be an eight-month lag.
Yeah. Seven-month lag, but still, I mean, you're, you're going to have some funding, we know it's going to.
And I just want to make sure it's clear, it's clear. We're not looking at raising the rate. We are not looking at raising the rate because I refuse to increase property taxes. I refuse to increase local income tax, I mean. That's why I'm not in favor of the PSAP. It's just a redistribution of what's already being taken out.
Right.
Another consideration, literally, we, we've had this discussion this evening and, and we haven't even talked about the new jail. For those of you who don't know, like in, in the budget numbers that we've crunched, this is, this is not a, considered in this budget is not the potential costs of the transition to a much larger jail where we're going to need more staff, there's going to be more food, there's going to, you know, there's going to be a dynamic there and we've reconciled, we've had conversations, multiple conversations with the sheriff. About this transition cost. That is going to be, that's again, it's one of those rainy day fund items that it's a one-time deal. We know it's going to be substantial. You know, that's what a rainy day is used for. We're going to have these costs. We have to be able to have access to resources if we're going to be wise. So.
We've had multiple discussions with all people, all players, judges, the prosecutor, the sheriff, commissioners, MCC, who am I missing? I don't know. About, you know, what, what our criminal justice system looks like and how it can be better efficient in the way we're doing things and spend less money. We've had multiple conversations, we have a meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, it, it continues on. I mean, we're, we are working to try to figure out how to make this as best and efficient as it can be. It requires, I mean, it's challenging. It requires patience on, you know, all parties because we just don't have all the information. We'll be making a decision next month about this budget and it has to now. Other thoughts?
So are you talking about having a meeting in two weeks just to talk about the lit? Or also can we possibly have a conversation about the budget and get our budget where it needs to be?
No, that, that, yes, no, that, that is, that is the next conversation about the budget. But we're going to announce specifically the issue related to this lit percentage. So in fact, I, I'd like to throw out, I'd like to find a date, that week of the 22nd. Does anybody go on that week?
I'll be gone Monday, Tuesday. I was able to come back Wednesday. I wanted to ask Bob, voting on the, or the change, are there certain things I can do remotely? Is that one of them? I know the budgets cannot vote on a budget.
No, but, uh, yes, so you've already adopted the ordinance, those, those.
Yes.
You would be able to participate in voting with that set, with that into the range.
With that particular issue, but it's not a budget.
Correct. I can do it Tuesday night, I can call in, I'm going to be out.
Yeah, give us some time.
If they need to vote.
Hi, sir.
5:30.
5:30.
It's on the 23rd.
Does anybody have an issue with 5:30? 5:30. Anybody else? Everybody else, 5:30 Tuesday to 23rd, then we'll put that in there and we'll address this.
And so we will be looking over the, the signees on a budget.
We will be looking over all, all, all the rest of the budgets as well. Anybody else? For those of you who are, have hung in there with us, thank you for your patience. Anything else we need to do? Okay. Take motions. You got to sign stuff. Don't leave 30 signs though. Most of the jurors.
Make the motions.
Pass the culture, bear a second. Else would like you.
All in favor, say aye. And a vote.
Well, and that's what they do. They're going to wear them down and let it go and wear them down and let them go and wear it down. Hello, my friend. I'm packing up. Yeah. Yeah, give me, I just got to run to the bathroom. All right, all right, see you. All right, bye-bye. Bye-bye.